If we can call the meeting to order. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Monday, March 4th, 2013, 7:30 PM Riverside Township Hall, Room 4. Welcome to everyone who is here today. Thank you for being here, those who are with us, those who are watching at home or will tune in later to catch our Village Board meeting on our website or in the DVD in the public library. We're moving into spring here today, it's March, but thank you for all coming out ahead of our largest snowstorm of the year they're predicting, six inches, how about that, huh? Six inches used to be nothing, but now it's the largest one we've had this year. So, again, residents and visitors are welcome to all meetings of the Village Board. Comments and suggestions on any topic are welcome at any regular meeting. Comments may be made during the time identified for public comment on the agenda, or if the comments pertain to an agenda item at the time that item comes up for discussion. Individuals who wish to comment must be recognized by the President and then speak at the podium and should begin by identifying themselves by name and address so that the Village Clerk can add this information to the meeting minutes. Please note that while Village Code requires two readings of an ordinance, it also provides that the Board can waive the second reading and take final action on an ordinance at any time by a vote of the concurrence of a majority of all members then holding office. So with that, I will ask our Village Clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Here.
Trustee Salz.
Here.
Trustee Shavitz.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Also present at tonight's meeting, Village Manager Peter Salarra.
Here.
Village Attorney Lance Molina.
Here.
Village Clerk Kathy Haley. Absent tonight, Trustee Reynolds and Trustee Satchi.
Thank you, so we have a quorum at tonight's meeting, so we shall proceed. With that, I would ask if you would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask Trustee Ballerine to please lead us in the pledge today.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, and with that, we shall move on with the meeting. First up, I will call our Police Chief, Thomas Weitzel, forward, and he has a couple of reports he wants to brief the residents and the Village Board on. Tom?
Thank you, President Gorman and trustees. I was going to brief you on the Wedge Report and the UCR mandated crime index that will be released later on this year. They've released a preliminary report. I'll start with the Wedge Report. We published that about a week, week and a half ago. It went out to all the municipalities that are involved in Wedge, that's 11 current municipalities. Several of those municipalities, along with Riverside, have since posted that on our website and distributed it to their board members. So I thought I should just hit some of the highlights with you this year. 2012, we took in our, probably our last community we're going to take in for a while, and that's the Village of River Grove. We still have two other communities that have requested to come on board, but the Board of Officers, being the chiefs, have currently rejected that. We don't want to get too big, so currently, we're going to be staying with the 11 communities that encompass the Wedge Gang and Drug Task Force for right now. In addition to that, we got our first federal agency come in, and that was ATF. They joined us as a partner and assigned ATF agents as a liaison between their office and investigations that were, the police and Wedge come into contact with firearms. They assist us in the firearms tracing and investigations that may take us out of state. They handle that, and they handle the tracing that would go along with that. You know, Wedge has grown, it basically now takes in, out of these 11 communities, it's about 31 square miles, a population of just under 300,000 if you took all 11 communities into account. 300 patrol officers in those 11 communities, which 20 of them are assigned to Wedge. Most communities have at least two officers assigned to Wedge so they can reduce overtime and just assign one officer during different operations so they're not depleting their force back at home. This year, meaning 2012, we had significant gains in weapons confiscation, drug contacts, and gang contacts. We started to track how many gang affiliates are working in the suburbs that we came in contact with. Out of 11 communities involved, they came across 31 separate gangs in 2012. Doesn't mean we arrested all them, there could have been gang contacts or associates. Out of those 31, 26 of those gangs are, have their base in the city of Chicago, most of them in the west side of Chicago. We experienced the gang members crossing Austin Boulevard and coming west in 2012 more than we have since Wedge was incorporated back in 2008. So, you know, most of the stats went up, maybe that's good, but what we tried to point out this year is we were doing more long-term investigation. I'll just make point of one investigation so I could, you know, answer any questions or at least make this presentation short. Our longest investigation was eight months, originated out of the Village of Oak Park, was heroin distribution. For the first time, we did a conspiracy case. We worked with the Cook County State's Attorney's Long-Term Narcotics Investigation Unit. We obtained COHs, which is a police term and state's attorney term for consensual overhear, which are, we're basically wiretaps, and we worked these cases for eight months undercover with a detective from River Forest and two detectives from Oak Park and a detective from the Cook County State's Attorney's Office. And at the conclusion of the eight-month investigation, they arrested three individuals, all from the west side of Chicago, who were attempting to set up a major heroin distribution here in the Oak Park, River Forest, Forest Park, Berwyn area, and probably as far as Riverside and Brookfield. They had just started to get their contacts, and through the wiretaps, we were able to make several other arrests later in the year. Those arrests have not been released because we're still working those individuals on other cases. But, so instead of just doing the street corner sales, which we still do, or the gang activity, or these festivals that are happening, sometimes the Wedge Unit will be asked to work the summer fests in Berwyn and Cicero and Elmwood Park and some of the other towns that have large festivals where gang members like to come and disrupt these family outings. We were recently contacted by the Chicago Police Department just within the last week because of the incident at the Ford City Mall that most of the individuals that caused the problem there were associated with gangs, and two of the individuals arrested, one was from a resident of Brookfield and the other one was a resident of Forest Park, so they wanted us to let us know that they had contact with these individuals. So, it really is a regional approach, and we'll continue to probably reach out to federal partners. I don't think we'll turn away federal partners because they have, they could take the investigations out of state, and they also have a lot more money than we do locally, so they can bring in funds to the Wedge Unit that we don't have to apply to our local community. So if any board member has a question on that Wedge Unit, I'll answer it. If not, I'll move on to the crime stats.
(Inaudible)
Tom, let me ask a question.
Go ahead.
In the, in the four times I've had the honor of hearing this report from you, it's, it's clear how the, the impact has really grown from the operations of Wedge and the benefit it provides to all of our communities. When does it become too large?
We're, we believe we're at, there, out of the 11 chiefs that serve on the Executive Board, nine of them did not want to add another municipality as a full partner because it taxes our street supervisors. When you're working four to six days a month and you're taking those officers from patrol and redeploying them with tight budgets and your first commitment is to your own community, we did not want to expand beyond that because two of the communities that are looking to join, or would at least express opinion to join, are extremely busy communities, and we would have to up the amount of time we would work. So, they're comfortable at the 11 communities now, they, they do not want to move on beyond this.
Right, I, I think you use the words, you know, your focus is on our community, and I think from my perspective, I hope from the Board's perspective, I mean, we've always viewed, viewed, viewed Wedge as a way to provide resources we could not provide on our own to help us solve cases. And I understand the interconnection between these activities, you just cannot keep yourself cloistered in your own village. So I, I, I get it. But my question about how big is too big goes to what you've been addressing here is, our responsibility is to this community.
Correct.
And to make sure you, your staff, you know, services our residents.
Correct. And we do have several investigations going, and we have used, Wedge has made arrests in Riverside, and what it's really done too is it allows us to use them. Let's face it, Riverside is a small community where most of the residents know our officers. It's pretty hard for our officers to work undercover. So, when we bring in for narcotics, we have to really bring in officers from another community. They, they won't know the officers from River Grove or Elmwood Park, but they will know our own officers with, you know, permanent shifts and like so. When we conduct those investigations, most of the time, we're using officers from other suburbs.
Thank you.
My crime report, I just wanted to make sure the Board had this ahead of time. The State Police has, has sent me the preliminary 2012 crime report. Now, this is only the UCR, it's the Uniform Crime Report mandated reporting. In their categories, as you can see, a lot of them don't apply so much to smaller communities such as Riverside, but this is what the federal government requires the FBI to track. Of those reportable crimes, we're down 8.4% from 2011. So unless that number changes between now and they do the audit, the actual report will be released in June, and sometimes it's a little longer that with the federal government, it might be the end of the summer, that'll be the published crime stat will be 141 reportable crimes in Riverside for 2012. It certainly does not represent every crime. They don't track misdemeanor DUIs, drug cases, you know, those type of thefts, they don't, that's not what they track. They track murder, criminal sexual assault, robbery, aggravated battery, burglary, theft, meaning felony theft, motor vehicle theft and arson, and that's what every police agency in the United States has to report to the State Police, and then they report it to the FBI. But our overall crime will be down 8.4%. I can tell you that Riverside will be listed as one of the safest communities, not only in Illinois, but I believe will be listed as one of the safest communities in the United States based on their criteria. So, sometimes you'll see a novel report published in my annual report that'll come out maybe in April, and there'll be more crimes in there because we track in-house the misdemeanors, the DUIs, just so the Board and the public knows what's actually going on. But those numbers never make it to Washington. Those are for our residents and really are just for our elected officials to know what the volume of activity is within the community. But that's the same for every suburban community. In fact, the city of Chicago has to report the same way, there is no deviation based on population. That's why if we have one crime, it could go up 100% if we had no crime the year before. So, but I am, I am, I will say, I will make one comment on the UCR that I noticed this year, is, and I'll put this probably in my annual report, the cooperation from our residents this year has been outstanding. We had a 22% increase in calls of suspicious activity to the Police Department in 2012, either suspicious noise, suspicious car, suspicious person, and those lead directly either to preventing crime from taking place, or the officers actually find a crime, you know, a burglary, a theft, subject has narcotics, maybe he's wanted on a warrant. But that's from residents calling us, saying this person's been lurking around, or this car has been parked in front of my house or my neighbor's house for the last 20 minutes and the dome light's on and somebody's in there doing something. And when the officer goes and investigates, sure enough, they are doing something. So, I mean, that, that's a lot. When you see a 22% increase on reports of suspicious activity, I think our residents are doing a fantastic job of letting us know what's out of place.
Any questions for Chief Weitzel or comments? If not, Chief, thank you for the two updates.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the meeting. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to address the Board, seeing none, we shall continue on to the reports of the Village Officers. First up, Village President's Report. I have, first, I have a commission appointment. We have a vacancy on the Preservation Commission. The President, the member who is being proposed for appointment is with us this evening. The Preservation Commission consists of nine members. The Commission is responsible for assisting the Village Board in the establishment of standards and criteria for the preservation of landmark buildings and structures having historical, architectural, or other significant qualities and characteristics. There is currently a vacancy on the Preservation Commission due to a resignation. Village President, I recommend the appointment of Michael Leary to serve on the Preservation Commission to fill this vacancy. So I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Michael Leary to the Preservation Commission to fill a vacancy, the term to expire in 2014.
So moved.
Second. So a motion by Trustee Shavitz, a second by Trustee Ballerine. Is there any comment? If not, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Salz.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Thank you, and Michael, would you please step up to the podium for two purposes? One, I want all of our residents that you've heard us talk about, and the chief compliment our residents, I want our residents to get a good look at you, and our Village Clerk will administer you the oath for Preservation Commission.
Can you repeat after me?
(Inaudible).
Sure, yes. I, Michael J. Leary, do solemnly swear.
I, Michael J. Leary, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of Preservation Commissioner.
Of Preservation Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee. President Gorman.
Get that signature out there, yeah.
It's official.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Trustee.
As far as the President's separate report, our last meeting was two weeks ago. Since that meeting on February 25th, I had the pleasure to attend, attend a forum, a transit forum sponsored by the Active Transportation Alliance. So, that dealt with transit issues region-wide and funding and infrastructure and so forth, but driven by the Transportation Alliance, Active Transportation Alliance, it of course dealt with complete streets, bicycle routes, walkability, and, and so forth for communities. We have, we are a member of the West Central Municipal Conference Bicycle Committee, is that, I think their term that it's called, and our Public Works Director is the Chairman of that committee, and one of our residents is serving on that committee, and that is Paul Sterner. And it deals with bike routes, not just in Riverside, of course, but throughout the west, west suburban region. On the 26th of February, I attended a forum at Harper College that was put on by CMAP, and it dealt with advanced manufacturing and workforce education. Obviously, a much broader topic than the Village of Riverside, but for this region to maintain its competitiveness going forward in the future, which is important, it benefits all communities. All communities have to pull, pull together towards educating our young people, educating people who need to be reintroduced into the workforce. And advanced manufacturing is, is, is a, is a well-paying, growing industries within our region. And on February 28th, I was at Triton College, and along with a number of other mayors from the Triton District, attended the Black History Month closing ceremony at which Tony Preckwinkle got to speak. So it's always a pleasure to support our Cook County Board President. And that ends my report, so I will ask Village Manager Salarra to give his report.
I only have one item for my report this evening, and that is to provide the Board and community an update on the LTA, CMAP LTA program. The CMAP representatives have completed their draft report, and that report has been given to our Steering Committee, which will be meeting this coming Wednesday to discuss the report and provide their feedback to CMAP. Once that is complete, we will have a public open house for the community, once they've had an opportunity to review the report and to come in and kind of informally meet with CMAP representatives who helped put the plan together to share with them any suggestions, recommendations that they think should be included in the final report. That meeting has been set for March 19th, here in this room, from 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM. And then, on April 15th, the Village Board will have the final report presented to them by CMAP, at which time, the Board would, will have an opportunity to adopt the plan and, and accept it. That is my report.
What's the format of this meeting on 9th? Is it an open house concept or is it a presentation?
Yes, it's an open house concept. We're still working through the details on what things will be available for, for residents to take a look at, but once we get closer, I'll, I'll have a better idea on whether they'll have just a, an ongoing PowerPoint with slides as well as some hard materials. They're still working all of that out right now.
And they're obviously going to be taking comments from residents and interested parties.
From the residents, yes.
Thank you, that's it?
That's it.
All right, and moving on, Village Attorney Lance Molina.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, Lance. Next, we shall move on to the approval of the Consent Agenda. On the Consent Agenda this evening are the approval of the Bills of March 4th, 2013, approved Village Board of Trustees Executive Session Meeting Minutes of February 4th, 2013, approved Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes of February 18th, 2013, file and review Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Meeting Minutes of November 13, 2012, and file and review Riverside Historical Commission Meeting Minutes of November 27, 2012. Does any trustee require any item to be removed for discussion? If not, then I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Trustee Sussman and a second by Trustee Shavitz. If you would please call the roll, Kathy.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Salz.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and that Consent Agenda is adopted. Moving on to the next item on our agenda are the reports of the Board Chairpersons. First up is Finance, Personnel, and Preservation. Trustee Satchi, who is not with us, so Peter, will you please take his item?
Sure. This first item, and only item under this report, is a first reading of a ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of $1,425,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2, 1, 2013 of the Village of Riverside, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding waterworks and sewerage revenue in alternate bonds, prescribing all the details of said bonds and providing for the imposition of taxes to pay the same, and for the collection, segregation, and distribution of the waterworks and sewerage system operated by said village. Further authorizing and providing for implementing the plan of refunding for waterworks and sewerage revenue in alternate bonds. In 2005, the village issued alternate revenue bonds for water system improvements with remaining interest rates between 3.6 and 3.85%. Due to historically low interest rates, the village may have the opportunity to refund or refinance the remaining bonds to achieve notable savings. Spear Financial will be utilizing a negotiated sale to bond buyer RW Bear, who will then sell the bonds to investors. Preliminary calculations are that we will be able to secure rates between 2% to 3%, saving roughly $12,600 to $17,700 per year for the remainder of the bonds, 2014 through 2019. The savings estimate is based on data provided on January 25, 2013, and is subject to change. If we cannot achieve appropriate savings, we will not refund these bonds. As I said, this is a first reading with a second reading for March 18th.
Thank you. Peter, is there any discussion by the trustees on this item?
I just have a quick question for Jessica, please. In, in your introduction, Jessica, you said that, I, I think maybe I'm just reading this wrong, it says this is dependent upon our rating. You're not expecting EAA2 to change, are you?
The village has actually had an interview with standard importers. We're hoping by certain things that we've done strategically with financial planning over the past year, we're optimistic. However, we, we, we don't have the final bond rating yet. So, one of the, no, not to a AAA. By moving to S and P, right now, we're essentially two levels below a AAA. We're hoping to ratchet it up to be just below a AAA.
That's great.
So, but, like I said, we have, we have to wait to get our results back from S and P, which we hope will be at the beginning of next week.
And then, does the state situation affect our interest rate?
No.
It doesn't?
No, they look at the Village of Riverside independently from the State of Illinois.
Good thing, huh?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Jessica. Any other discussion? If not, this item will come back for adoption at our next meeting. Obviously, an opportunity to have a positive impact on our operating budget all the way through the year 2019, so this is obviously good news. Thank you, Jessica and Peter. Anything else from Trustee Satchi at your word?
No.
Thank you. So, moving on, Public Works, Transportation, and Utilities, Trustee Salz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item I have tonight is a resolutions of the Village of Riverside authorizing the Village Manager to enter into a two-year contract, with an optional one-year renewal with Christopher Burke Engineering Limited for engineering services to be provided to the Village of Riverside. Since 2008, the Village of Riverside has utilized the services of two separate engineering firms, Bennis Engineering and Christopher B. Burke Engineering, to meet the needs of the village. Bennis Engineering has assisted Public Works staff with the annual street program and the Community Development Department with review of site-grade plans for the new residential construction and addition projects, as well as special projects such as the rear yard drainage study of 2010. Burke Engineering, on the other hand, assisted Public Works staff with the village's water and sewer infrastructure projects, as well as the green grant the village received in 2011 and 2012. In November 2012, the village sought a request for qualifications from engineering firms authorized to do business in the state of Illinois with experience in civil engineering, geotechnical engineering, and environmental engineering. The village mailed the RFQ to nine firms in the Chicago area, and in December 2012, received nine responses. A panel of the Village Manager, Public Works Director, and Building Community Development Director reviewed all proposals received and narrowed the list down to four companies to interview. Proposals were evaluated based on the experience of the firm, knowledge of staff, ability to provide engineering support, and customer service philosophy. After careful consideration and evaluation, the panel recommends that the village utilize the services of Christopher Burke Engineering, based on its experience with the village, knowledge of the village's existing infrastructure, experience with grant procurement, qualified engineers on staff redundancy, and a customer service philosophy compatible with that of the village. The fiscal 2013 budget has $244,000 allocated toward engineering services, broken down as follows. $19,000 for community development, which includes costs for plan review inspections, et cetera. $19,000 for a street sufficiency study. $40,000 for Burlington Engineering. $155,000 for sewer study. And $15,000 for Scotswood Sewer Engineering. A agreed contract calls for engineering services to be provided by Burke on a time and material or proposal basis for two years, and a one-year renewal option at the end of year two. Burke has agreed to hold their hourly rates at the rates provided in the agreement for the first two years of the contract. So I move to approve a resolution of the Village of Riverside authorizing the Village Manager to enter into a two-year contract, contract with an optional one-year renewal with Christopher Burke Engineering for engineering services to be provided to the Village of Riverside.
Second.
So we have a motion by Trustee Salz and a second by Trustee Shavitz. Is there any discussion on this contract? Do you have anything to add to this?
Just that it was a interesting experience going through this. I think the, the main reason, at least for me personally, going through this process, it helped me understand certain processes that engineering firms follow for projects that, that they work on here at the village. So, for me, it was a learning experience. But the reason why in the end, we decided to stay with one of the firms that, that we currently work with is, the thing that stuck out for me was the question that Ed, our Public Works Director, had asked all four of the interview firms, and Burke answered it right on the way that my philosophy is, and that is, is that they stated that when someone calls their office, they guarantee that they will always get a person and not a machine. So, that really stuck in my mind because that, to me, epitomizes customer service, and that is, being able to respond to individuals and know that they're dealing with a person who understands their needs and wants to try and work with them to resolve their problems. So, I'm, I'm satisfied with Burke. I'm glad that they agreed to hold their rates for, firm for
I'm glad that they agreed to hold their rates for firm for two years, and that I look forward to a number of projects that we currently have on the horizon, so.
Thank you, Peter. And if there are no other comments or questions, then I will ask Kathy to please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Sells?
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz?
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine?
Aye.
Thank you, so that is adopted with respect to the contract for Christopher Burke Engineering. Trustee Sells, do you have anything further?
Nothing further.
Next up, Public Works, excuse me, Public Safety, Health, and Landscape, trustee Reynolds, and he is not with us today, so we will ask our village manager to once again sub in.
This item is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a sales agreement with Jackfale and Chevrolet for an amount not to exceed $49,480 for the purchase of two 2013 Chevy Tahos for the replacement of two existing patrol cars. This is the replacement of two marked patrol vehicles from Jackfale and Chevrolet in the amount of $49,480, including extended warranty for both vehicles. Funds approved for this purchase are budgeted, and the total price of the squads come in under the approved budget. Replacement of these two vehicles is part of the previously established replacement cycle for two marked squad cars, squad 51 and 56. The department is trading in two old vehicles and was quoted trade-in prices of $14,500 and $6,500 for the other. A total of $14,500, $6,500 for one and $8,000 for the other vehicle. The Jackfale in price is lower overall than the State of Illinois bid program that we participate in. So with that, that is all I have on this item. Chief Weitzel is here to answer any questions you may have regarding the vehicles or the write-up that was included in the packet.
Chief, do you want to just give us a little bit of background on this, and then if any trustee has any question?
Yes, we went out, we looked at the state bid, and then we went over to Jackfale for the Chevy Tahos, see what their bid was and what their trade-in value would be, and they came in, not only did they come in under our budget of $68,000, they came in under the state budget. This memo is included with it. I detailed a little bit more because there was some concern by one of the trustees last year that the $49,000 that we're using to purchase the squad is for the squad cars themselves. The outfit, because we're not using, Ford doesn't make the Crown Vics anymore, this year will be a little bit more than you might see in the future, plus it's a Chevy. So I detailed what the changeover would be. Now, those are budgeted items that were approved by the board in separate line items within our current budget, but even with that, with the trade-ins that Jackfale is giving us, it brings us in $2,000 under budget with the vehicle purchased completely switched over and refitted with the new equipment. And some of the equipment will have to be new because it just won't fit, like the prisoner cages, for example, the ones we currently have in the Fords, they won't even fit in the new Fords if we were to get those, so. The board has any other questions on the purchase or my write-up, I'll be happy to answer those.
What other vehicles were looked at other than the Tahoe?
Ford has an SUV out, it's a police package. It's their, the new Explorer that is on the state bid. Then the Chevy has another squad for administrative vehicles, that's an Impala, and the Ford has their version of replacing the Crown Vic, which is a Taurus.
Through all these cars, are miles per gallon similar?
Yes, the Chevy Tahoe we want to buy, which is the two-wheel pursuit rated, doesn't mean we pursue people, all that means is that it has heavy shocks, you know, it has more heavy-duty equipment on it. It's 17 miles per gallon. The Crown Vics we currently are driving is 16, and that's pretty much the standard. The new, you've probably seen some of those new Ford SUVs that are out, they're smaller, and actually, in most cases, they're more expensive, depending on where you're purchasing it from.
And this price includes the striping and the warranty and the...
The final price does on the memo. The 66480 includes everything, changeover, striping, equipment, new equipment in some cases to replace it from the...
And this 100,000 mile war, five-year warrant.
Yes, and the manager had suggested that we get the extended warranty, and it may actually be a bit less because I'm reviewing with my staff, but I priced these as two-marked vehicles. We're discussing if maybe one of the vehicles be a traffic vehicle that's unmarked, which then we would stripe it, which would be another $1,500 left. I still haven't decided on that yet.
Doesn't some of the striping and changeover costs come out of DUI enforcement or seizure money or something like that, doesn't all come out of the village budget?
Well, this year, this year alone, we budgeted because we knew that they weren't making the Crown Vics, so there's a separate account in repairs and maintenance just for the model changeover. But in the past, we have used the DUI funds to mark the traffic cars. The DUI fund allows us to mark any car that is used, and more than 40% for traffic enforcement. Well, within the Village of Riverside, about every squad car we have is used for more than 40% traffic enforcement, so, you know, we can justify that. But this year, because of the model change, last year when we did the budget, we purposely put more money into, because we knew we weren't going to get the Crown Vics again. So there is money in the DUI funds, but it's not budgeted in this, for these squads.
Can I just ask a procedural question? Thank you, chief, excuse me. Why is it that we're voting on the $44,000 and not the 60-plus thousand?
Because the contract is for the purchase.
Oh, for the purchase, not for everything else, okay.
I have a couple of questions. So just so I understand, looking at your memo, if you provided, so the $49,480 covers the base cost and the extended warranty?
Correct.
And then the other ones are all separate line items?
Correct, the line items that are cited in there, if you went to our budget, it'd be in repairs and maintenance, and then there's another, here's a line item for the changeover.
And another question that we inevitably get whenever we replace cars like this is why we aren't moving to greener cars, cars that get better mileage? Can you address that?
Well, I can for law enforcement. We could, should, like, for example, the Tahoe, they have a green vehicle, but the state bid is $52,000 per vehicle for that version of the Tahoe. The other green vehicles that are out there, Ford just has the Flex Fuel, which we already have, they don't have a green product for the police line of vehicles, or even like they run the same line for taxicabs, and either does Chevy for the fleet. The actual Tahoe does have one, and the, an example, the only agency I was able to find that purchased it is the DuPage County Forest Reserve District Police have that, and it was $52,000 per vehicle, which is doubles what we're paying for the Chevy Tahoe that's on the police.
But what about smaller vehicles? And what is the need, why the need for such a big car for the police?
Well, it's several reasons. One, prisoner transport, we have to have room for the prisoners. They're not all small, the prisoners we take into custody. The backs of the vehicles are used for the equipment storage, emergency response, first responder equipment, there's breaching tools in there, there's high-powered rifles that may be used for certain instances, there's first aid equipment, that's all in the back of the SUVs. Now, that same equipment is, some of it is also in the Ford Crown Vics, but to a lesser because we can't fix that much in the Crown, in the Crowns. Plus, those cars have spare tires in them, right in the trunk, so it takes up a lot more money.
And the other question I have, and I don't know whether this is for you or Peter, whether this goes to you, is with regard to the extended warranty. The memo says additionally, the bumper-to-bumper five-year, 100,000-mile warranty will extend the longevity of the vehicle for patrol use. Does that suggest that we're thinking about keeping cars for five years instead of a three-year rotation?
Well, that's part of our CIP planning for all equipment, in that I, along with Tom, will evaluate all vehicles, and each year, we will look at whatever vehicle is up for replacement, and if we feel that we can get another year out of the vehicle, we will do that.
Because, I mean, these two cars are, both are three years old, and one has 68,000 miles, the other has 76,000 miles. So, guess, I'm wondering why, if we're going to be trading cars in in three and four years, in that 70,000 to 80,000, 90,000 mile range, why are we paying for a five-year, 100,000-mile warranty?
Well, there wasn't much dollar difference between the three-year and the five-year warranty. That's another reason why it was longer. So in the event that we keep vehicles for four years, it's still under warranty.
And there will be more, we had these, when I had the cars appraised by both companies, that was two months ago, it's four to six weeks for delivery, or four to eight weeks for delivery. These cars, even if I order the cars tomorrow, if the board so approves it, those, the cars we currently have won't leave our possession for another six to eight weeks, so it's that mileage plus the mileage, you know, there's another four months of mileage that'll be added to these cars by the time they're actually traded in.
So, sorry. So just to go back to what you said about the CIP planning, so your thought is that, and I know you haven't made this decision, but the idea is instead of just having kind of an abstract three years in trade, you're actually going to be doing it more on a, let's actually look at the car and see if we can get another year.
Right, and we're going to keep it on a three-year cycle, but when a car, in the third year, prior to bringing the budget to the board, we will look at that vehicle that is scheduled for the following year, and then we will make the determination, if we feel we can get another year out of it, then we'll keep it another year. So in essence, we'll keep it for four years rather than three years. I just don't want to put us into a rigid, every four years or every three years, we're going to replace the vehicle, because some vehicles, for whatever reason, we can get another year out of it.
Right, I mean, we want to keep them as long as we can, that's why I was curious about the statement about the five-years, 100,000-mile warranty.
And, well, and that's the main reason why, because the three-year, there wasn't much of a difference between three and five, so we figured might as well just go with the five, so that if we do have it, it's under warranty if something does happen.
One last question on the warranty. I'm assuming they know these are going to be police cars.
Yeah, they're ordered. Yeah, they're ordered. These ones that we'd be ordering are specifically...
I'm just saying, warranty-wise, you know, the normal wear and tear is not...
It's contextual.
And the second question is, does it make any sense for us to, I mean, since we can't changeover or use any of the lights or bars or anything that are in the old cars, does it make sense to keep any of those old cars? I mean, for the savings of $6,000, does it make any sense for us to have one as spare, to have one, you know, I notice other police forces happen to park an unmanned car in a parking lot that I drive down, and every time I see the car, I slow down and I get closer to it, and there's never a cop in it. But does it make any sense for us to keep any cars to do that kind of stuff with, to use around, to have as a spare, to...
Yeah, may in the future. We have plenty of requests to slow down traffic, and there's been times that we parked a squad car right in front of the village hall here, because we get complaints that people almost get hit coming out of the village hall here to cross, and we just, we'll put a car there if we have one available, but it may make sense. You know, we don't have court cars. A lot of communities give their officers cars to travel to court in, to make it mandatory that they do that. Actually, that's a recommendation from the insurance carrier. We don't do that unless you're on duty. If you're on duty, you can take the squad car to court. If you're off duty, you go on your own. Almost all municipalities around here will make their officers come in and take the police car to court for liability reasons because of the, what could happen between, you know, here and there in court, because even though we're sending the officers to court in their own car, they're on duty. So we don't do that. I have them use their own cars, and it's actually in our contractual agreement with our union members, but it may make, and it may give the manager maybe even in the future more flexibility if that car could be used even by another department within the village, I don't know. We did look into I-bidding the cars this year, but they came in with such good trade-in that even, we didn't go to the I-bid because then we would lose the value of the trade-in, and the price wouldn't have come down as much, so. I did look to try and do that this year for the first time.
Because when we trade in the cars, we trade in the cars with the lights on it, with the thing, we don't strip it down and sell all the parts. They get the car just the way it is.
Well, they sure, yeah, you're right. I'm going to be able to use, some of the inside lights will fit, the outside lights will not. It's too long, so, but those lights that are inside, are inside the grill, those could be taken out and thrown into the Chevy because they're just put in a different location. So there is some, the radios will all be, we can use those, the computers will all be okay to switch over, the squad car camera, it's just installing it in a new vehicle. It's mostly the outside equipment that has to be replaced, depending on the size of the vehicle. And the prisoner cages, those are made specifically to fit the squad car that's designed. You almost always have to buy new prisoner park dishes.
Okay, well, I would just like to, you know, maybe look and see if it's worth maybe keeping one of the two cars, and if there's a use for it in the village that...
Or are you proposing that we do that for this? If that's the case, then we won't approve this, because this price is dependent on both these cars being traded in. You asking if we do that now, or are you suggesting that for the future?
Peter, what do you think about that?
We still have enough Impalas or Crown Vics, and I think going forward, we, Tom and I can sit down and discuss that. I would hate to lose this for that. I think going forward, that is something that we will consider.
Okay, fair enough. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the...
Do we have a motion yet on?
We do not.
No, okay, thank you. So we have a motion by trustee Shevitz for these two car purchases. We need a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Sussman, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, if you would please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Sells?
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz?
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine?
Aye.
Thank you, and this is approved, and Joe, I'm glad you did not disclose what town that is that you speed through on a regular basis, so...
I slow down when I come in.
It would be a long list, I suspect.
There you go, touche. Okay, moving on, River Parks and Recreation, trustee Ballerine?
Just a few things. March 23rd, 2013 is the annual Easter egg hunt and the official start of spring. It will be held at 10:00 a.m., and this year, it will be held at Big Ballpark. In the past, I think the past three or four years, we were too scared to hold it at Big Ballpark, and we held it at the Public Works Building. This year, they have decided that spring is in the air, so it's going to be at the Big Ballpark, 10:00 a.m. The other thing is day camp. We had such a successful day camp last year, 75% of the slots have already been taken up. So if you're interested in day camp, better get into the recreation department as soon as possible. And the other thing is the Riverside Parks and Recreation Facebook page. I encourage all residents to go to that page, like it, and request notifications, because there's often updates, news stories, pictures of the camps, items about special programs that'll keep you best up to date, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ballerine. Next, Building Planning and Zoning, trustee Sussman?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And Public Relations, Economic Development, Open Government, trustee Shevitz?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. And that closes our meeting for business purposes. We do have an executive session scheduled. We will adjourn to an executive session to discuss collective bargaining matters. We will not reconvene in an open session, and no business will be transacted or voted on in closed session or back in open session, since we will not have any further open session. So with that, I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session. Second. A motion by trustee Shevitz and a second by trustee Ballerine, if you would please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Sells?
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz?
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine?
Thank you, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:20.